Twenty twenty. Springfield Plan and Commission to Order and Settle Pledge.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we are ready to call the roll.
Mr. Townsend.
Here.
Mr. Poole. Ms. Woodard.
Here.
Mr. Allen.
Here.
Mr. Hollinsworth. Ms. Mason. Mr. Gregg. Mr. Powell.
Here.
Ms. Boyd. Five members present, we do have a quorum, Chairman.
Okay, is there a motion for approval of the minutes from December the fifth?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion and second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, they stand approved. Under new business, we have several items tonight. Item number one is a rezoning request from MRO to RI for 5.67 acres on Bradley Drive. Is there a motion to put this on the floor for discussion?
Some.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we're ready to go on this, David.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have had a request from HPS Development and an authorized agent, Kevin Dean, requesting that we rezone this piece of property. Well, I'll get it straight here in a minute. Sorry about that. First day back on the job after 12 days. Okay. This piece of property, this is 5.6 acres, this is Bradley Drive here. This side would be Bill Jones Industrial Drive. This is where the fire station number two is at. Fastenal Building that's been under construction is right there. And this is that row of office buildings. That's Kelton Jackson, but out here was Bill Jones.
Yes.
So, the request has been from, to go from MRO, multi-residential and office, to RI. Quick background, this was at one time zoned RI, and then we zoned it MRO, and now they're requesting that it be rezoned back to RI. Mr. Dean has a, wants to expand his business, he wants to build a new facility. It will have some steel fabrication component to it. We will have to go to the Board of Zoning Appeals next month if you guys decide to move forward with this rezoning for conditional use for metal fabrication. But it's an acceptable conditional use, much like we did with Excel Industries there at the end of New Hope Lane last year, when we rezoned them to get them into compliance in RI. Staff has, we have no concerns about this, utilities are available. You know, it's technically right there in an industrial, already RI. These, these four lots or these five lots are already zoned RI. So, you know, and then of course, all of this right here is zoned RI as well, restricted in industrial, and then this is our, the Springfield Business Park that we've had for several years.
Okay, have the neighbors around been notified?
We have placed, as we normally do, the sign for that annexation, and it's been advertised in the Robertson County connection. Have we reached out personally to those members? No, that's, has not been part of our procedure in the past, but, you know, if this is something that y'all want to do, we can.
If the rezoning goes forward and the conditional use will go before the BZA Board, at that point, we send out letters to the adjoining property owners and across the street.
Thank you, that is correct, for the conditional use.
Right.
Okay. Are there any of the neighboring properties present tonight? Okay, I don't see any hands, so it's like it's up there.
Yes. Staff has no reservations about this, you know, it's an acceptable use. RI is right next, you know, literally across the street in two directions. It was previously zoned RI.
Okay, any other questions, discussion? Is there a motion on this item?
Can I make a motion to approve?
Okay. There's a second. We have a motion and a second. We're ready to vote.
Mr. Townsend.
Yes.
Ms. Woodard. Mr. Gregg.
Yes.
Mr. Powell.
Yes.
Mr. Allen.
Yes.
Passes five to zero.
All right, item number two under new business is the annexation request for North Wallace Road. Is there a motion to put this on the floor for discussion?
Show move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we're ready.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have had an annexation request for North Wallace Road from the property owner, Mrs. Bonnie B. Drake, and her appointed and authorized agent, Clay Jones. We are still working on the plan of services. We're close, but we've got some, we gotta make sure that the, all the departments have seen it and respond, because all the departments are involved when we annex, because they have to provide services to it, and they need to understand that. We have already discussed this with Mr. Jones. This road right here will have to be upgraded, this piece right through here will have to be upgraded to our minimum standard. It will have to have curb and gutter, it will have to have sidewalks one side of the street, it will have to have street lighting. The water line going up this road will have to be upgraded to an eight inch, and at least one fire hydrant will have to be provided, may require two based on the actual distance. And a boiler will have to take place and go across Highway 41 here, so that sanitary sewer can be provided to this property. So, the, Mr. Jones has, and we will work this out, but he's committed to meet a lot of these standards. You know, we, during our plan of services, we would make sure that, you know, emergency services are capable of responding, that Parks and Rec understands their responsibility, you know, they get codes enforcement as well. Water, wastewater is a little bit more involved in this, and so, as well as electric, because we're gonna have to, I don't know that there's anything on the property that has CEMC electricity, but we will have to make sure that if there is, we have a transition between CEMC and the City of Springfield to provide the electric services. Apparently, they're reading the gas department's comments, they have made comments, there's no gas running up that road right now, but it's available should Mr. Jones request it's an, you know, request to have the services provided. So, you know, through our urban growth agreement with Robertson County and the 10 other cities within Robertson County, we have agreed that we will not annex anything that has not been requested by the owner. We do not go out and annex without, by referendum or anything. We only request or annex due to requests by the owner. The existing city limits runs right there. This, this piece of property would be bath fitters property right here. So, we will annex the right of way down to here and this property right here.
Do they know what they're planning on zoning that?
Oh, yes, sir, I apologize, the rezoning would be, would be concurrent with the annexation, and it will be RS 10. So, there would be 10,000 minimum square foot lots. Mr. Jones is proposing something similar to what he's proposing on South Main Street, 1,350 square foot or larger homes with brick fronts and sides and cementous siding on the back, am I correct on that, Clay? Obviously, to get that kind of density, he's gonna have to have sanitary sewer service as well, he's committed to that, committed to the road improvements, committed to the water improvements, like I said, committed to the electric improvements, street lights, so he knows what he's getting into.
So, staff recommendation? Staff recommendation would be for approval?
Once again, we only annex by request, and they're contiguous to the City of Springfield, we have no reason to not to annex the property.
If we make a motion, would that be conditionally?
Well, yes.
Being able to provide a service plan?
Yes, you know, and that's the thing, we, there's no way we're gonna get the service, plan of service together for this Board of Mayor and Alderman meeting. We just felt that we needed, it was already on the agenda, we needed to bring it on forward. We will come back in February for you to actually see our plan, the plan of services that is gonna take place, so that y'all can make that recommendation to the board. But, you know, there, it was, like I said, it was on the agenda, it was in the advertisement, the neighbors are here, if.
Every one of us are.
Everyone on that road he's speaking of, every one of us own at least two acres property. And he's gonna put all this, all these little houses on these little strips of land, it's gonna change our whole environment, the whole reason why we live where we live. Not to mention the drainage issues that he's skipping around, if you have no clue, we've been there for years, all of us have.
I'm gonna get my four-point some neighbors burnt, and I bet you I got 20 or 30 natural springs, and you're gonna try to put houses, that's more houses than that's on the whole road. There are seven natural spring farms on that road, and you can walk in in 10 minutes. That's how many springs in a yard, Joe, and you want with those houses?
Hang on just a minute here, how many of?
Ocean control.
Hold on just a minute, how many are here that are neighbors of the property?
I've been out there 33 years.
Okay. Is there one of the neighbors that would like, would like to come up here and speak?
Oh, I'd love to.
Okay, can he sort of speak for the group?
Sure can.
Okay.
I own the house. Show me your house.
This is North Wallace Road, this is.
This is North Wallace Road right here?
Yes, sir, this would be a bath fitters property right there.
Is that where the smokehouse, the barn used to be?
Yeah, I would say that's where.
That's where my house is. Right now, I've got flooding from just natural water running down right now, goes around the right side of the house, around to the back, there's a culvert down here, all the water coming from this property right here comes down, it floods up between two driveways here, it runs across here, my, almost a third of my property, right now, you go up there, there's standing water, there aren't a whole place, actually, running water. I've joked around with people who know me, that I wanted to open up a kayak whitewater rafting, because that's where the water.
That man has two natural ponds on, that we're trying to develop on. It's got two natural ponds, which is.
Western Libby, I'm on 4523 North Wallace Road, which I also have documentations from the Drake family, who I bought my land from. I had questions about that land when I first bought it, I bought it sight unseen, because I'm living in Florida, I lived in Tennessee and Springfield for almost 19, well, in Tennessee for almost 18, 19 years, had a house up off of Bethlehem Road built by the Spains, which I think everybody knows the Spain family, they built this house here. We had to wait four months just to get the footing in, because it was so wet. But I've got documentation from, from the Drakes, the smallest house can be built on any of those, that property, anywhere on that, that road that they own is 1,400 square feet. My concern was, was the land across the street before I bought the land, I talked to the realtor who represents the Drakes, they told me the most they'd be able to put is three houses if it perks. My house, has anybody even know the property? The builders, have you been out to that property area at all? You know my house right across the street, the green brick front? My property goes up to the right-hand side to where Brian, Brian lives. James. I had to put my septic system way up the top of that hill, I spent almost $11,000 on the septic system because of the way the land is, it's so wet. Two septics and basically looked like a battle zone, where they dug up entire property on the right-hand side of the house. It's extremely wet, I've got running water, any given time it's raining, just, I've got pictures from just last Sunday alone, and the water just coming down the road is going across and basically engulfs my house around the right side, to the left is a pond, the back left. Right about in here, there's a pond, the culvert runs across here, runs down, they said that pond overflows, I've got a bird feeder, that's probably a good 15, 20 feet from the edge of that pond. Last Sunday, actually, Tuesday, Monday, we had heavier rain, that water from the pond, or actually not from the pond, the pond is where it was flowing, overflowing the pond and the water coming down from all this, was almost 30 feet to the right side of where that bird feeder is, which is a good 40, 50 feet from the pond. Obviously, I've got great concerns of this, only because right now, the water drainage way it is now, you're gonna have to put driveways, roads, et cetera, you're gonna put storm drains, unless you're planning pumping it from here all the way up to 41 somewhere, and I talked to a lady on, from the city hall I talked to on Monday, and said that would be, something that'd be addressed.
That would be me.
Excuse me?
That would be me, you talk.
Okay, thank you. She was very, very helpful and very clever, and I'd actually get a lot more information than she does, I like to, oh, surprise.
Yes, sir, I do.
I hope I wasn't rude.
No, sir.
Paul, I also, this, I'm not even sure who, when, we finally had the footing being built, cement truck was on its way at 1:00 in the afternoon, and somebody from, I'm guessing the city, came by, I was told, and our building permit, which I also have a copy of, says it has to be 50 feet from the edge of the road. I went 51 feet from the edge of the road, because I've got a huge shag hickory that I wanna take and save, I was gonna have a 10 by 12 deck, which is now 10 by 10, because whoever this gentleman was that came by, said, oh, no, you gotta go 60 some odd feet from the middle of the road back. So, I had to move my house back, I had to shorten up my garage, I lost my front step area, so obviously, when you're gonna be doing this double, two-lane road, that all's gonna have to come from that property.
Adam, I don't wanna look at 14 houses in that property, that's crazy. There's five people that live on that road, and all of us own large amounts of property.
Just a minute, the way we need to do this, if you wanna speak, you need to raise your hand and come up front, it's just hard, we need to be able to hear and know where you, you live and that type of thing.
You're wrong, great concerns of all this. But anyway, my property, that road cannot go towards the house. All that property, for to widen that road, has to go to this side. You've got, you know, I wanna see how it's gonna work. The reason why they're trying to sell this, I don't know the reason why, but that, they're not gonna sell that property, the way land's going right now, there's a reason why that land will not sell. It's way too wet, it will not, you cannot put houses on that lot, on that piece of property. I've got, I'm scared to death looking in my crawl space. And I'm not sure how you actually do your houses, you have to spend a lot of money if it's protecting any kind of water going into all your crawl space, your basement area.
Ned, is your house in the county or in the city? Your property?
County.
In the county, that's, that's what I thought. All right.
I wonder, what was the size of the houses you were planning putting up? How much? Okay, well, 14, I've got contracts saying nothing can be built smaller than 14, point blank cannot be smaller than 14 square feet. Well, that's the reason why I bought the house, or I had the house built and I bought the land, knowing that the real max houses would be three houses across that street. Of course, they run into problems where they can't even put a house up there, I was told. I, I got all that, but I'm, maybe I'm, a raise some other people be finding that, because we're not gonna allow that to happen. Again, that's what I bought that property for, is to look across, could see no more than three houses, which I knew that, especially after I started putting my septic system in, they'd be lucky to put one, I was told they'd fit, they put one house with two bedrooms and one bath is all it perked for, out of six point something acres of land, which tells me, tells you exactly how wet it is, and they're gonna get steady water and all that, but you still have wet land. My concern is when you start taking all that dirt out and you start putting in roads, that water has to go somewhere, and if you're the owner, you're the only response to make sure this does not, that it flood all us, our properties out. Well, I'm telling you what they have to engineer, engineer to get the hell all the way up the hill back up to 41.
Okay, I'm, I'm whacking my gavel an awful lot tonight, when you come up and speak, you need to speak to us.
Oh, sorry.
Not.
Well, I'm not, I'm, I'm a chef, I'm not a.
We're the ones that have to vote on it.
Okay.
And we'll have somebody from the, the four side come up and, and speak too, but when you talk, you need to talk to us.
Okay, sorry, I apologize. Anyway, what is the, what's the price range you're looking at for these houses?
Say again?
The price range of these houses.
Oh, we, the only request is for annexation with the R10 zoning on. Now, one question I would ask you, are you only opposed to the R10 zoning, or are you opposed to the annexation also?
I mean, I'm, I'm opposing the whole kit and caboodle.
Well, the proposed houses, R10 house will be in the $200,000 range, correct?
Right.
Okay. Is that what you had?
Is there anybody else from the?
Is there anybody else that would like to come up and speak? Okay, you'll need to come up. Okay, this is, when, when this goes to the Mayor and Alderman, you'll have a public hearing. And this is not a public hearing, but since there's neighbors here, we wanna get some input, so we know, you know, what we're voting on and who's for it and who's against it and.
And it's only having, excuse me, start, back to the mic. We've only had in five, six houses on that road, could it be done, that someone can actually send out letters, so we actually know about meetings going on? Because the only reason I found out is by calling this one lady right here, finding out about it, did the thing saying the call number, but I talked to my neighbors across the street, they called, talked to somebody in the city hall, it wasn't you, it was a gentleman. And the only thing they told her, told the two ladies, mother and daughter across the street, is that it's to widen the road.
David wouldn't have told you that.
Well, I'm just saying, that's what they told, I know, the one lady was screaming.
If you would state your name and where you live.
Al Sloan, 4352 North Wallace Road. Five mem, five members, I would ask one thing, if y'all was to go and see the site for y'all's self. Engineers are gonna have to pump a couple hundred feet above where the level is to get anything up the hill. Water's gonna come down the hill, sewer, I don't know where that's gonna go. And who, besides opposing this, who's in favor for it here tonight? That lives there. Understand, the people that lives there oppose it, the people that don't live there is for the annexation, that's all I'm gonna say.
Okay, thanks.
Y'all go see it.
All right, are there people here that represent the, that are in favor of the annexation? Okay, would you like to come up and? Okay. I will say this while he's coming up, we don't actually approve an annexation, that's the Mayor and Alderman that do that, we make a recommendation to send to them.
Phil Castroline, CSR Engineering, we work on a project for Clay Jones. Everything that David said is what we're proposing, it's a annexation with a rezoned RS 10. With that, there will be no septic systems, it'll be pump sewer back to the main water, stormwater will have to meet the City of Springfield's requirements, which is quality and quantity, to not excess, excessively discharge water off the property, so no more water than 1/4 mile. And beyond that, the City of Springfield's are growing.
Okay, I'll ask you the same question that we asked the other guy, is the, are you locked in on the R10 zoning?
Yes.
RS.
RS 10.
RS 10.
Single family.
Single family, right. Okay, any questions? Tony, I can hardly see, somebody put a screen in front of us.
Another tough one, though.
Okay. Now, are there any other questions or discussions for David, or?
We're not actually voting on this or making a recommendation until after the city has, because we're all cool with everything, are we?
That is correct.
Right.
You do not have to take a motion or do anything tonight, we knew that we had advertised it, and that we, you know, we didn't wanna inconvenience, inconvenience the, the other owners out in that area, so we, we kept it on the agenda, we do not have the plan of services 100% yet, we will bring that, plan of services back to you guys next meeting, which is the, which, sixth? The first Thursday of?
Yeah, the sixth.
First Thursday of February, you know, all, and so, once again, all I can say is, is that we require, you know, we annex by request only, if the property owner wants to be annexed, they can request to be annexed, and we have yet not to annex somebody. It's strictly by request only, as per our agreement with Robertson County and the other cities.
Okay.
How many total acres is this we're talking about?
Six and a half total.
Last month was 30 units on about 11 and a half acres.
Yes. See, they, he's not having to put in, you know, there's a whole different type of development.
Right, right.
And the other development, the 30 lots is controlled by the fact that it's on the cul-de-sac.
Okay, any other questions?
So.
We do have options.
You just, you know, you can say thank you. You just, you know, you can say, thank you, let's move to item three. We're not asking for any sort of recommendation to the board of mayor and alderman at this present time. We just wanted to make sure that it stayed on the agenda.
Okay.
You can just not make a motion at all, and there's no motion to do anything, and we can, and, but as chairman, Mr. Allen can move, say, there's no motion, we'll move to item three.
Okay. And that doesn't fail due to a lack of a motion, it's just?
There was no motion made. So it, there will be a request for a motion next month, though.
Okay.
All right, okay.
All right.
Item three.
Is there a? Are you good with that, Ray Carroll? Okay.
I've got one question before we continue to make sure. So on February sixth, for two minutes, is that gonna be, would that should be, have been voted on, whether it's approved or not?
No, sir.
If they, if they go ahead and work on the plan of services and the request is still there, this will come up again probably next month.
Yes, the way, the way annexations work, sir, is, is that, uh, this request will come back to this planning commission with a, a, a plan of services that all of our departments agree will work. We will, it is being requested by the owner, we have no reason not to annex the property. These, this board will, this planning commission will make a recommendation to the board of mayor and alderman to annex the property. Then, it's a three reading process. We read an annexation resolution three different times, so it will be the third Tuesday in February, the third Tuesday in March, third Tuesday in April. At the second meeting, the third Tuesday in March, there will be a public hearing to speak to the board of, of mayor and alderman. You get to tell them what you think, but you, you don't get to ask any questions, or you just tell them why you're opposed to that annexation.
That'll be in April?
That would be in, that meeting would be in March if we continue on this schedule.
And if you change the schedule, how will you know?
We, it will not be advertised in the Robertson County connection.
It really not?
It will not be. So.
So how will you know?
That's what I was saying earlier, it's only a few houses that may have been on the town road.
Well, you know, at the present time, unless, even if this planning commission votes not to recommend to the board of mayor and alderman, it still goes to the bo, board of mayor and alderman. The only way that this would not go is if the owner pulls the request.
Would the mayor be here?
Well, not at next planning commission, they will be at the board of mayor and alderman, which will be the third Tuesday in February. But there won't be a public hearing at that time. The public hearing would be the third Tuesday in March, which would be the time for you to stand up and voice your opinion on why it should not be annexed. And if you have any questions, concerns, please feel free to reach out to our staff. We'd be glad to answer any question that you might have or direct you to, to, to the best possible answer.
It's only about seven houses on the road, it's all quiet, one lane road. We don't see sixteen houses built down there. You know what it's gonna turn into in four or five years, you know what those houses are gonna be?
There'll be two hundred and.
Yeah, now, there'll be real, there'll be solid, people will come up there and hang pay for them, then I'll give rate it out, you know how it goes.
There'll be real problems.
I, I do not know, sir. I, I, I cannot speculate, all I.
We don't have one.
I understand.
Are you able to bring a lawyer with you to?
You are able, yes, I mean, it's not a, uh, it's not a, a, a legal proceeding, it's, you know.
Okay, I've gotta hit my gavel one more time. If you have questions about this, you need to see David after the meeting, uh, but that, that's not something that we're voting on or not voting on. Right now, we don't have a motion to vote on, so if there's not, if there's no motion, this will go.
B R E W E R.
We'll go on to the next item on the agenda.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks for coming. Uh, item number three, Rudolph Street numbers change between four oh three and five hundred, a name change.
Yes.
Is there a motion to put this on the floor for discussion?
Motion.
Second.
Uh, all in favor, say aye. All right, any opposed? Okay, Dave.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, what has taken place is, is that E nine one one has requested that we rename and renumber this street due to the, there are two facts. One is that they've actually run out of numbers for Rudolph. The second reason is, is that presently Rudolph comes from Memorial down and then ends here at Linda or Driftwood, depending on which side of the streets you're standing on, and then it comes over and comes down from Linda Lane to Hickory Drive here. And so, um, the, this piece of property is in the process of being developed, cut, it was sold by the city, it's subdivided, the addition of those two new numbers have caused there to be a lack of numbers. So Robertson County, E nine one one has requested, actually, it's not a request, we need to rezone, rename this so that there is not any confusion for the delivery of emergency services. Uh, the name will not be in any way similar to Rudolph. It's, uh, right now, the proposed name is Sugarberry, and it will rename all of the, uh, renumber all the properties that front through here, which are a couple of townhouses, um, and, um, some other, and then that, then down through here, there are other, uh, numbers that are right on house, on, on the houses, but there are several duplexes or townhomes, quadplexes that are on there. And so, this, this is the existing number on Rudolph. Uh, E nine one one has requested that these be the new numberings. And there is actually one house on Woodmont, which would be this house right here, that will wind up being renumbered as well, because it actually faces, its driveway is on that road, and that's the way they number houses now, where the driveway is at. So, no, we say to you guys, you, we request that you ask to move it forward, and, uh, and we'll change them by resolution with the board of mayor and alderman. We will send out appropriate notifications to the impacted, uh, property owners, but this was not due to what we wanted to do, it's due to E nine one one's request. The last time we did one is, what, two thousand and six?
When we changed Weaver.
Weaver.
To Weaver.
Yeah, right across from the, uh, Robertson County Funeral Home. So growth has its positive side, it also has its negative side.
If you have to change your address, that's kind of a.
Well, I mean.
This is over the option, this, nine one one doesn't give you any other option?
No, they, they're out of numbers.
Yeah, they're, they're creating a headache for the, every one of these customers out there.
Yeah.
Every time I hear a thing like this, it makes me feel for the families who have to go through all the changing. I remember a couple of years back, uh, did we have the same problem between, was it Curtis Wood, the section of the home between Black Patch and Tom Austin? I think they were, I think they were asked to change their numbers.
Well, I don't, I don't remember about that one, but I live on New Chapel.
Uh-huh.
They changed, about four years ago, E nine one one came in and changed, because I had a three-digit number, evidently they're going all to four digits.
Hmm.
And I had my address changed.
Oh, Lawrence Line.
Yeah.
No, New Chapel.
I mean, on New Chapel, but.
But, yeah, that, I mean, E nine one, and they didn't ask me, they didn't ask the city, they just told me that my address number was changing.
I, I've had my, uh, address changed, and it was, I mean, you can do it, but just the hassle of, uh, you know, changing everything.
And a lot of companies, I know Comlicky, for example, won't just change an address. They've gotta have a letter from nine one one stating this address is changed.
Right, and, well, and I think as well as us sending out letters, E nine one one sends out letters as well.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm. You know, we will send out a letter, we've got a standard letter that I found that, you know, said, change your mailing address, change your, make sure you get your utility bills to the right address, your credit cards, your social security, you know, it, it lists out five, six, seven, eight things, it, it recommends that you note, you as a homeowner, reach out and notify and let them know if an address is changed. Unfortunately, it's just, it, it is, it really is part of growing. Um, the, the main concern on this is the, they, they're trying to alleviate any confusion established with, um, with, uh, an east or a west or, 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 or anything like that. They just want to make sure that emergency services know where they're going, when they're going. There was a, and you're right, there was a, uh, it was a Curd, it was Curtis Wood.
Yeah.
Uh, we had to, uh, uh, come up with something else for a continuization, 'cause it was, uh, there were, you know, Curtis Wood is over there in, uh, Moreland Estates, but it's also over here in Hickory Acres, so they had to designate out a west or an east or something.
Right.
It, it just seems like the, the emergency people, I'm assuming they have a map in the office, and it seems like they could just look at the map and see which would be the best route to get to wherever they need to go.
But, Mr. Townsend, if you, especially with ambulance, a lot of the ambulance people, the drivers and everything, they don't necessarily live here in Robertson County. They sometimes are from out of, you know, in, uh, Davison and other counties around, because they don't, they don't always just live here and know where the streets are.
Yes, and so they use a combination of the county's GIS, graphical information system, and GPS to court, uh, to navigate to these addresses, not only in Springfield, but in Robertson County as well.
Does the city have any liability if there is a mix-up with an ambulance and somebody dies or?
Uh, no, uh, no, we don't, um, to be frank, but, you know, we have the first responder. We are the first responder. Our fire department in a, in a health emergency is the first responder. Uh, I can assure you that when his name changes to Sugarberry, they're all over it. They know, they will know. And then, I don't know what the percentage is, but, you know, there's a, a good probability that the ambulances are sitting right next door to the fire department when they go out, unless they're out on a call. So, you know, there will be some discussion about this new road, uh, the drivers will be made aware. Uh, like I said, it, once it's updated in the GIS system, it's updated in their navigation system, and they will not have any, you know, 'cause that's all done from E nine one one. They don't even have to program their navigation system. It, when it says, go to four oh three, Sugarberry A, you know, it's going, it's on their navigation system.
Well, I was thinking, on the other side of that, if we do not change the name, if there's a mix-up, then, we had the option of doing it and didn't do it, was there a liability there?
There's always, you know, there's always a possibility of liability, uh, you know, uh, we try to manage risk, um, that's what we do as a city. This is one of those things that E nine one one has requested to try to manage the risk associated with delivering emergency services.
Do it the best we can.
Do, do, that's it. You know, with the technology and equipment that we have available today, it, you know, so we just hope the cell system stays up and everything's good.
Okay.
I'd say motion to accept and move forward with it.
Okay, there's a motion for approval, is there a second?
Yeah, I, I second, and I, I know we gotta do what we gotta do, but in my opinion, it just seems like we asking the wrong people to fix the problem, but I second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, we're ready to vote.
Mr. Townsend?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Gregg?
Yes.
Ms. Woodard?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Passes five to zero.
Okay, item number four, Oakland Farms, Section Three, Phase Eight, plat and bond. Uh, is there a motion to put this item on the floor for discussion?
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
You have already seen the final plat of this, it, and we don't have it up here, but it's a continuation off of, uh, Section Six in Oakland Farms, continuing north towards , uh, the Norman property, um, and, uh, parallels Section Seven, that it's still got houses under construction, uh, the total development of the, the property has not, of, of Section Seven is not done yet. There is a, uh, bond, they haven't done completely all of their required work for that subdivision. Section Six, we'll discuss, Section Six and Section Seven, we'll discuss in a moment, but the bond here for all of that work and their bonding at all is three hundred and forty thousand, six hundred and twenty-seven dollars and eighty-two cents. We recommend that you recommend to the board of mayor and alderman to accept this bond and, uh, move forward. We will, depending on the date that they get, you know, they got it to us today, so we will, it'll have today's date on it, uh, so we will set our resolution up so that ninety days before it expires, we follow up and we have permission from the board of mayor and alderman at, uh, with the original resolution to, to call the bond if needed.
Okay.
I got this, just a question. Since all this is pertaining to Oakland Farms, is it possible to lump all of these together and, and vote, wipe zone out?
Unfortunately, no, because there are three different sections.
Okay.
And that we, you don't have, you won't have to vote on, uh, item six, and you, and, we would, so, let's just move forward forward, we'll hit five, we'll have a quick discussion on six, and we'll keep moving right along.
Right. Just a question.
Okay, is there a motion on this?
I'm, I'm motion, make a motion to approve this bond.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, we're ready to vote.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Ms. Woodard?
Yes.
Mr. Townsend?
Yes.
Mr. Gregg?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Passes five to zero.
Moving on to item six, which is, or item five, which is Oakland Farms, Section Three, Phase Seven, bond reduction. It's actually not gonna be a reduction, the, the amount is the same, they've gotta get us a bond or a letter of credit for thirty-two thousand dollars, they have to get it to us bef, you know, before next week, actually, for it to be on the agenda coming up, so, for the board of mayor and alderman agenda. So, that one, and so we would recommend that we accept the, a replacement letter of credit for that, that will be their second time, they're very close to finishing out, and we'll move forward with that. Same conditions, it, you know, that we stipulating all of our resolutions.
Okay, and we need a motion on that.
To recommend acceptance of that bond.
I make a motion to, to accept this, recommend acceptance on the bond.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
We are ready to vote, Ed.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Townsend?
Yes.
Ms. Woodard?
Yes.
Mr. Gregg?
Yes.
Mr. Allen? Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Passes five to zero.
Okay, and you said item number six was?
Item six is just a quick topic, item Oakland Farms, Section Three, Phase Six is, or is it? Section Six, Phase Three, is finished. We have not accepted the infrastructure or the roads, the sidewalks, anything yet, we have to establish a maintenance bond amount, we're working with Mr. Ellis and the other department heads to do that, to be frank, it's been so long since we've done one, we want to make sure we do it properly, but we're actually going to accept the right-of-way, the road, storm drainage, sidewalk, water sewer, streetlights, and then, after, you know, the maintenance bond would be in place for a year, and then, well, it goes away and it's all ours and they're free and clear. So this one, this, this one has actually been completed.
Okay, good.
Can get an amen.
All right, item number seven is Eden Point, Phase One, bond reduction, is there a motion to put this on the floor for discussion? Is there a second? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
This is another one, you know, we've got to get it here before the beginning of next week, is, this one doesn't expire until February the 5th, but to be on the January meeting, it has to get to us next week, we will call, ring Mr. Eden's phone off the hook until he gets back in touch with him, us, we've sent several emails, but we have not had a response yet, but, you know, the other option is that we will actually call the bond if we don't get a replacement bond. This bond is for the amount of $50,940, for whatever reason, I keep pressing the wrong button.
That's 205, it's supposed to be 20%.
Yes, but it has, it's about 40% bond.
This is supposed to be SS 205, I didn't get the percentage in there, the percent.
20% bond premium added to it, as, as required by our subdivision regulations. So, anyway, so, Donnie is, we're going to be getting in touch with Mr. Eden and moving forward one way or another, he gets us a bond or we exercise his existing letter of credit. And this is a reduction by about $120,000.
Yep.
So we recommend this, acceptance of this bond at $50,940.
So if you have to call this, this, this amount, 50,940, we'll take care of everything it needs to.
On this phase, yes, sir, because it's got, it's got the sidewalks in, it's got curves, it's got gutters, it's got, it doesn't have a finish course, but it's got all the streetlights, so if we had to make a permanent cul-de-sac at the end, this amount of money would put the final course in the permanent cul-de-sac out.
Okay, any other questions?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second.
Ms. Woodard?
Yes.
Mr. Gregg?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Townsend?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Passes five to zero.
Item number eight is the MLK Junior Park Expansion Site Plan, is there a motion to put this on the floor for discussion? Is there a second?
Yes.
Okay, I heard a second. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Parks and Rec is going to do another expansion out at Martin Luther King Junior Park, which is fabulous, they're going to do a, this right here is two multi-purpose fields, correct, Mr. Martin, and then a playground, the, the only real utility in it is the electricity that will be used for the lights, we reviewed it, it's just a continuation of the plan, as always, we bring anything that the city is going to do to the Planning Commission, so that there, there is no question that we're following the procedures that we are supposed to follow, staff has reviewed, minimum comments have been made, and we recommend approval, and then we will follow up with Mr. Martin, there are letters that have to be sent to him and to his block grant manager so that he can get his funding. But this is, this does, this is on a block grant again, correct? So it's through a TDEC grant, Tennessee Department of Environment and Conservation, that's the way we funded a, a little bit of the last one as well, correctly?
That one wasn't a, that wasn't a grant, was it?
What's the first?
The last one wasn't a grant, that was all city funds.
Right.
Yeah, this is the first grant.
Yeah, the splash pad.
Other parts of the park have been granted, but this, this section here is being granted, the splash pad wasn't.
Okay, all right, so, we recommend approval, any questions?
Make a motion to approve.
Thank you.
Is that a second?
Yes.
We have a motion and a second, if there's no further discussion, we're ready to vote.
Mr. Townsend?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Ms. Woodard?
Yes.
Mr. Gregg?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Passes five to zero.
Okay, we do have some old business, other business category things.
Yes, sir, we just wanted to let you know that the Board of Zoning Appeals will meet this month, it's next Tuesday, next Tuesday, and these are the items that are on it, there is a request for assigned variance, there are, then Venture, that's from GS Moore &amp; Sons, then Venture 24 LLC, has two variances on two different lots, in, on Seventeenth Avenue that they will be requesting variances for. Small non-conforming lots, they're difficult to develop, I wish there was some other way around going that route, but at the present time, we do not have a vehicle set up to do that, other than through the variance process. Hopefully someday, as we get an opportunity, we will come up with a, a better way to address these non-conforming lots that can be built up. And that's all we have now, with that said, I know y'all are ready to go, but we said we were going to give you ten minutes of training, we got to do it, and so Gina is going to give you ten minutes of training on non-conforming uses in lots.
Can I, can I, can I do a training again, or how can I do this? It's ten minutes, but, I mean, that's all we're going to do tonight, but anyway, if you need to leave, I'm sure you, you can leave, but, I'm just going to give you, I'm just going to hit some high points, and then I do have some, some articles or some, and some definitions and stuff that I'm going to get to you all, so if that's cool, so. Basically, in the, when we, a lot of this comes up a lot of times, especially in the, when we have the smaller lots, the sale of the, some of the city-county property has been a lot of non-conforming lots, that's why we've had variances, so many variances that have come before the BZA board, and a lot of these lots are, like, especially in the R7 zoning, where the majority of them take place, they're usually below the 7,000 square feet minimum that we have for our current zoning right now. So that's what we, that is sort of, just kind of giving you a picture, a word picture of what a non-conforming lot is. Also, a non-conforming use, a non-conforming use is, I'll give you this example, here, when we rezoned in the historic district, went from R10 zoning to RS10 zoning, the R10 zoning allows for duplexes, the RS10 zoning does not allow for duplexes, so that is the reason that the historic district homeowners basically got together and said, "We want to be rezoned to RS10 to keep any more duplexes being made into some of these older houses that were being done." When a duplex has been used for, you know, numerous years, if it's, if it goes with, goes, is sold and goes to be, become a single-family home, if it becomes a single-family home for one year, over one year, like a year and a day, it loses its non-conformity, it cannot go back to being a duplex ever again in that RS10 zone. So that's kind of the difference between the non-conforming lots and the non-conforming uses, and a lot of people get that, you know, really mixed up about, well, this is commercial, it's been commercial for all these years, and why can't I have it commercial now? If it was a, a commercial use for, you know, say, a long time, and then, if it's not really, and it's in a residential zone, it's not really supposed to be there. That's kind of where people can't really understand what we're trying to tell them, so, the reason we started with this is because it is hard to understand, and you probably will have a lot of questions, and if anybody ever says this to you, you will have a little bit more of an, a intelligent response to them about knowing what non-conforming and non-conforming uses are, and non-conforming lots. Basically, a non-conforming use is a use of a property that was allowed under the zoning regulations at the time the use was established, say the use was established in 1960, in the R10 zoning, we changed the R10 zoning to RS10 zoning, so if that use stops being for a year and a day, it can't go back to that use, just like, as I explained with the duplexes. At the time the use was established, but which, because of subsequent changes in those regulations, is no longer a permitted use, we have certain permitted uses that are allowed in the, in every zoning, whether it's R10, RS10, R15, commercial, any of the commercials, have certain permitted uses that are allowed outright, and then there's some that are not, and that's why we always have to go in, someone comes in and asks, "Can I do this?" And I say, "Well, let me look here," then I have to flip back here to my zoning book, and I have to make sure I look everywhere, to make sure that, that is not, is that something that they can do and has not been changed because of a zoning change or because of it not being used that way for, for over that year time. A non-conforming structure is a structure that complied with zoning and development regulations at the time it was built, but which, because of the subsequent changes to the zoning and/or development regulations, no longer fully complies with those regulations. A non-conforming lot is one that, at the time of its establishment, met the minimum lot sizes, lot size requirements for the zone in which it was located, but which, because of any subsequent changes to the minimum lot size applicable to that zone, is now smaller than the minimum lot size. It's just like in our RS10 zoning, our minimum lot size is 10,000 square feet. If you're doing a subdivision, that's what you have to adhere to, just like this annexation request or the one on South Main, whatever the, the number is on our zoning, that's what the minimum lot size is. Now, some of the lots in historic district may not be that 10,000 square feet, but that lot is a lot of record, and it was lauded, it was platted, say, in 1930, like some of the little, what I call the shotgun houses, the shotgun lots down on North, North Walnut Street, those are not 10,000 square feet. And that's, that's what we hope to do at some point, that, say, some person goes in and buys two or three of those lots, combines them to make a conforming lot, that's one of the things about the non-conforming lots that you hope to happen, once you've done all this zoning, and you hope at, at some point, the non-conforming lots are going to come, become a conforming lot. And, let me see, "The theory of the zoning ordinance is that the non-conforming use is detrimental to some of those public interests, health, safety, morals, or welfare, which justify the invoking of the police power. Although found to be detrimental to important public interests, non-conforming uses are allowed to continue based on the belief that it would be unfair and perhaps unconstitutional to require an immediate cessation of non-conforming uses. Local restrictions typically prohibit expansion of non-conforming uses in structures. Non-conforming uses usually lose their legal status under local regulations if they are discontinued for a particular period of time, such as six months or a year. Non-conforming structures typically, typically lose their legal status if they are destroyed such as fire in whole or in part, and ours is if it's destroyed over 50%. The use would not be, you know, would not be allowed to be built back, the house would not be allowed to be, be built back, if it was destroyed by either fire, a tornado took it out, flood took it out, whatever, if, if it is destroyed over 50%, it has to, the structure would have to come back and be conforming to the current regulations." So, are y'all timing me? Anyway, but no, that's just, that's just a little, just a little tidbit of kind of what, you know, I try to, I have to look at, that we have to make sure that real estate people know, and it's hard, it's, it's really hard, I mean, we've, we had an instance here in the, in the historic district of a house that had been used as a duplex for many, many, many years, someone comes in and buys it, uses it as a single-family home for about three years and decides they're going to sell it, well, after he's used it for that single-family home for, over that one-year period, it lost its non-conformity, it could not go back to the duplex, so he decides to sell it, somebody buys it, and they intend on using it as a duplex, and I'm the person who has to call them and tell them they can't do that. And so, from now on, I mean, and then I, one of the real estate, and the real estate agent who, who were, was in part of the sale, you know, he had me come in to his Realtor staff to give them a little, little background, a little lesson on different things, because he didn't want that to happen again, and I wish all the Realtors would do that, because the more information they have, you know, is, it keeps someone from buying a piece of property that they regret buying, or, you know, they can't use it for what they wanted to use it as, so. One thing I wanted to just hit on, a variance versus non-conforming use, and you hear us talk a lot about variances with a BZA board, but Buzz is the only one on the Planning Commission that has, that sits on, has sat on the BZA. A variance is an exception to an existing zoning, whereas a non-conforming use is also known as a grandfather clause, it arises when there is a change to the zoning, but an existing use is still permitted to continue. So, what usually the BZA see, hears a lot is someone wanting a variance from the setback, and some of these non-conforming lots can, the houses cannot meet, I mean, you'd have a little small, like, three-room house or something, but that is what the variance is, and that's what I always tell my BZA board, that it is an exception, a special privilege to be able to, be able to get a variance from the BZA board, it's not, you know, an outrighted use, permitted use and everything like that, and they can't, they can't build a house really without getting a variance, for the most part, most of the time. So, I just wanted you all to know the difference between the two, by variance and non-conforming, I know we throw these out there hilly-nilly sometimes, and you may not know exactly what they are, so, anyway, I guess that's all I've got right now, I'm gonna, I do have some things that I'm going to make copies of, and I'm going to get them to you, or had you rather have them on email? Email?
I think you did pretty good with the ten-minute thing.
Gina is our foremost authority without a doubt on our zoning ordinance, you know, years of institutional knowledge, we're fortunate to have Gina on staff, she is a great asset to the city of Springfield. Thank you, thank you for attending the training, and Mr. Chairman, it's your leisure, feel free to adjourn the meeting.
Okay, I think this may be the longest January meeting that I remember, thanks everybody for coming, I was sorry, we're adjourned.